Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Hyde Park. Yes, welcome. To the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. This is October 22nd. We welcome you to that meeting. This is where we help Hyde Park citizens and the community decide which way to go in the fork in the road. So, welcome. Welcome you all, and hopefully we can find which way you're going to go. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if we would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. We have the April 23rd minutes. I would move for their approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. We will continue the public hearings. The first is hospice, 542 Violet Avenue. There is nobody there representing them. We have continued that conversation. I will say that in the interim, we have received correspondence from both parties indicating a need to come together to discuss, one, the definition of what the problem is in terms of the management of water on that property and its impact in the community; and, second, not only what is the issue, but then what is the solution? It is our hope, and I think others as well, that that can be resolved quickly so that the hospice organization can expand their parking needs by 21 slots, which are significantly -- are needed for additional visitors that come to visit that program. And I will note that that program is supported strongly by the town and by the community, so we hope that this can be resolved quickly. With that said, we continue this public hearing. Yes. Do I have to open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't I open the public hearing? I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Have we received any more public comments or information?
Just from Mr. Kaminsky himself, saying there was at least one meeting between the engineers, but as he understands it, there is not an agreement on what might need to be done yet.
Okay, so the disagreement or lack of agreement continues, and we hope that they can be resolved. I think this committee is supportive of the concept, and we hope that the problem of management of water can be quickly resolved. All right. We then will move to continue the public hearing to November 20th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's move on to Hildebrandts. Welcome. You want to come up to the table? Okay. Let me just -- animal -- this is really to allow animal husbandry to be continued as close as 93 feet from a resident on another lot, or 250 feet is required, and from Section 108-4, 3B, 5E, to allow enclosed storage of manures, is closed at 50 feet to a well, as close as 50 feet to a well, and as close as 93 feet to a neighboring residence, or 200 feet is required. I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We know you, but for the record, would you state your name again?
Brad Hildebrandt.
And the crew?
Kalandra Mayo.
Okay.
Amira Aga.
Kylie Hill.
Great. Great. And I'm glad you're all here. We have -- do you want to, again, summarize for us and for the public what you're seeking? And I know that you've had -- we've all had some conversations with you, and sort of bring us up to date in terms of your position, where you are now. Go ahead and flip.
All right.
You want to move the mic a little bit closer?
So, we're looking for variants for having a chicken coop with currently five chickens. It's a project that the children in the house are helping learn how to take care of animals. We've also joined the American Poultry Association to learn how to further educate the children, how to raise them for therapy. We have a couple of children with special needs, and we're looking to broaden the education on it.
Now, you have subsequently written a note to us, to the committee, about some of your ideas. Will you want to tell us about that?
Yes. Sure.
So, we thought to make it--
Want to move the microphone closer?
We thought to make it fair, because this is not a forever project for us. It's pretty much the length that the kids would be in school as a part of a civic project also, like 10 -- around 10 years, no more than that. If our flock got destroyed by another animal, New York State says that you have to buy six together, so it would be six hens only at a max, and--
Enclose the--
Oh, yeah, and we're going to fully enclose it once we know if they're allowed to be on the property or not. We're going to make a more permanent enclosure for them.
When you say "fully enclosed," what would that include?
So, one of them flies, and she'll fly up over the fence, and we've extended the fence now since the last meeting, and she has learned now to fly over that. When her mom doesn't come out and visit her for 24 hours, she tends to come looking for her. So, we're going to completely enclose their run, but--
In terms of the atop as well?
Yeah, a top. So, instead of spending hundreds of dollars now, we were waiting to see if they could stay first.
Okay.
And then if we -- what was the other thing? If we sold the property, we would like it to be void before the time is up.
Questions? Counsel, do you have any? Mr. Perkins, anything?
No. I just would compliment, it's the least smelling chicken area that I have ever-- Yeah, I mean, I didn't know the chicken--
Right. We spend lots of time cleaning it.
You guys do a real good job.
The kids play with it every day.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were impressed with that.
And we were impressed with the way in which you had conversation with your neighbors after last meeting, and it really sounded like you came to terms with everything that needed to be done. That was very nice to see.
Thank you.
April or Paul?
Yeah, I had a question with regard to the replacement. So, you have to buy them in lots of six, but if the circle of life only takes one, then what?
We probably wouldn't. Like I'm saying, if like the whole flock got destroyed in the middle of her project, I would probably want to replace them.
Right, because you noted, say, maximum was six, but--
Yeah, maximum's six on the property at all times, just in case.
Right, but then with the constraint of buying in a lot of six--
Right, not an extra six, six max on the property. Yes, six max on the property.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Paul?
Do we have to change the resolution to address these?
I think she's furiously changing it now.
We're considering.
Counsel, are you?
I was amending the draft resolution.
Do you have some suggestions?
Well, just to reflect the -- that should the board move to grant requested variances, that the coop and run area will be maintained in a manner to prevent the free roaming of the chickens.
Okay. Any other changes in terms of the draft resolution?
Well, that's up to the board, I would say.
Right now, it -- we are talking about, specific to the chickens, any change or addition of the animals will result in revocation. Well, there's a limit of existing -- of the existing five chickens, and said chickens cannot be replaced. I'm sorry?
So, I thought last month that if a chicken was taken out, you weren't not going to replace it, but now it's changing.
No, like if the whole flock, or like if everybody but one--
Yeah, yeah.
If four got taken out and we had one, I would have -- I would probably want to get it at least one. Like, it would need a mate, a partner. They don't do well singly. I would need to replace one, but it could be, if everybody got taken out, New York says I have to buy six. We had six originally. One was a rooster, which was not planned. It wasn't -- they did not sex it properly, so we got rid of it. Our plan was never to keep it, which is how we ended up with the five. So, if everything died in the middle of her project, I would want to replace them.
So, if we lost three, there's no problem, but if we lose four, there's a problem.
Yeah, I don't think it wouldn't do well alone.
So, a minimum of two?
A minimum of two.
Okay.
So, that would be an exception to number one?
We're just saying, we're not -- this isn't a permanent thing until the kids are either completely uninterested and they pass away, or till their projects are over.
So, counsel, would you?
I'm trying to figure out the--
I'm sorry. Yeah. Any -- let me ask, anybody from the public want to make comments? Yes, ma'am? Want to come up? Want to give her a microphone there?
Hello, I'm Dr. Catherine Gleason. Nice to meet my neighbors here at the meeting. I'm very sorry it's here at this meeting, but I do have questions. So, if you're saying it's getting a little confusing over the -- New York State says six, but then you're like, it's two, so then if you were to replace some, you have to buy six.
Could you move the microphone a little closer so we can hear you?
So, I'm confused over if it's mandatory to buy six, and you're saying there's no more than six on the property, but if you had two or one, you would buy six?
No.
If I was to purchase more, I would have to buy six. Would six -- I wouldn't put six extra on the property. I have other friends that do have farms and stuff--
And farms.
Right, locally, so I could just take what I needed and part them off, but that would be something I would do personally before even--
So, there'd never be more than six?
Never more than six on the property.
So, a limit of six?
A limit of six.
Okay, that helps clarify it. Thank you.
No problem.
My other question is, I reviewed the tape from the last meeting, and it had said five years, and so tonight I heard 10 years.
Well, our youngest is 11, so that's just like, if, you know, she continues it, she still has, what, seven years, and if somebody wants to continue it through college, like she has plans to go to the culinary. So, if she wants to continue this for school until she graduates college, that was like our thinking, that no more than 10 years, but also--
We don't have a time.
-- Brad retires from the fire department in seven, we could potentially sell the property in seven years or less, so that's why we also said it would also be void if we sold the property, that we would take our chickens with us, or they would depart, and then it wouldn't continue.
So, I guess a little bit also, a little bit of clarification.
Is that out of the question?
No, she has more. She has one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, the other thing I'd like a little clarification on is, I understood about that you said there was -- I'm trying to think of how you worded it earlier for special needs. Okay, so is there an emotional support certification?
Yes, we have one child. Well, certification, no. It's a part of therapy.
But it's like a some kind of certified--
Do you mean our kids or the chickens? I'm confused.
Right, the chickens don't have a certification.
No, the chickens --
Right.
But due to mental health, usually there's a type of therapy, mental health therapy with animals, and so I just wondered if there was some kind of a formal setup as the therapy.
Not just to teach them about, to get them out in the community for social--
So, it's based upon like the home type?
So, well, it's social, emotional needs, making connections, and then my daughter doesn't go to school in this town, so they have a civic project that they do where they can bring the animals and stuff into the younger grades and show them to the younger kids and get them in, you know, try to get them interested in farming and husbandry and all of that. So, it's a way to get her out of her shell.
Okay. So, it's not like a documented thing? It's something that you're doing to help the family?
Yes.
Okay. And so that would lead into where I was going to ask about the clarification on what you were talking about for the project.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you just try to direct your comments to the board? This is your time to comment on the application rather than interact.
And I agree. I just feel funny that I came up here--
No, but it's good conversation.
So, it's better that I'm asking more about clarification of things, so they're talking about a project, and I would like the clarification of the project, because usually projects are within a timeframe, and also they have specific requirements and specific guidelines, so I would like some clarification on this project, because it was just kind of explained how it's a home project more so than a formal project.
Did you get clarification in your conversation? Did you just get clarification on that?
I got some clarification on if it was an emotional support certification.
Okay. And it's formally associated, your program is associated with the--
So, there's two parts to this. One is we're awaiting the four-H application locally, because the waiting list is ridiculous. The second thing is, is that they're signed up with the American Poultry Association, where they can either start their own programs through that. She can choose to do that at any time. She can also show the chickens if she chooses to locally, and then her school has civic projects that they can do, where she can write up a whole thing that she wants to do with the chickens and get it approved by the school, and go into the school with one of her chickens to explain what she does at home and everything. But that's like an after-school project. It's on her -- it's on her own time.
So, really, you've coordinated, what I hear you is that you've coordinated not only a program within the family and the participation, but with three outside organizations that have -- that bring a little different characteristics or requirements or standards, and you're blending those together?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what I wanted to know, because although you had gone to see the site, sometimes over time, I can make my sites look pretty too, when I know somebody's coming to visit, but then after time, things lapse. And so, I was trying to get clarification that things were not going to lapse over time of caring for how immaculate the board described the site to be.
Okay.
And my only other question was about, I read up to learn more about environmental and wells and so forth, and so the other thing I did note through the Dutchess County Environmental System is that if any wells are less than 50 feet deep--
I'm sorry?
If they're less than 50 feet deep.
And they are, and they are not.
Okay, I did not know that, so I wanted to clarify and make sure.
Yeah, they've met that requirement.
Okay. Well, I knew distance, but I didn't know on the depth of the wells.
Okay. All right. Good. Questions?
Well, I think last time we had agreed that existing five chickens were going to be the limit, and that they wouldn't be replaced as they died. Now, we are going for more chickens in a longer period of time, so we have to--
Microphone.
So, we have to come to a resolve on that.
So, we're looking at, you're looking at perhaps a resolution of six chickens for six years?
And that would be a hard stop then, rather than life of the chicken. Because we have to accommodate neighbors also here. I mean, you know, they die, and then you buy new ones, and then they live longer, and you know, we've got to make it finite.
But I think six and six will give you certainly plenty of time to evolve the program.
And reapply.
Yeah.
I think I'm done. I'll be done on this project.
Okay. All right. Other comments? Other questions from the board?
So, after the six years, and the resolution is -- ceases to exist, basically? It's done?
That it could lapse.
It lapses, yeah.
You're willing to agree to that. Okay, I have a question. So, we're saying six chickens for no longer than six years, starting from the date of this variant should be granted. They've indicated that if the chickens, you know, are meeting an untimely end, they can be replaced, is that still something that the board is considering?
They can be replaced up to six.
Up to six, so if--
A catastrophic--
If three has, then three can be replaced. If two has, two can be replaced, just maxed out at six at all times.
Right, the clock continues. The clock is given six years, that's it.
Okay.
And within that, you could vary from two to six chickens.
Do you want another week or another month to write this? Catastrophic event, I think, is the only thing.
Yeah, I mean--
What do you need? What do you need?
Well, do you want me to amend this on the flight tonight?
Yes.
Or do you want to? Okay, sure. Taken.
There'll be coffee and donuts.
Other questions, comments? Okay, then I would, there being none, then I would move to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have a--
We're going to just wait for a couple of minutes.
You guys read it out. You've got enough to read by the time you get to the end. Hopefully, I'll have this amended. Just whoever's going to read it, please correct. I believe it references five chickens elsewhere in the resolution.
I'll get it.
You should revise that as necessary.
Okay. Resolution to grant area variances, and this is for 33 South Crossroads, Statsburg, October 22nd, 2025. Resolution 2025-14Z. Whereas the applicant, Bradley Hillibrand, on behalf of himself and property owner, Kalandra Mayo, has submitted an application for an area variance to allow animal husbandry to be conducted closer to the neighboring residence than allowed, and to permit enclosed storage of manure closer to the neighboring residence. And neighboring wells then permitted.
Not neighboring wells to permit. We are within the permit, we are within the permitted distance for the wells.
Okay, so you want to line that out?
Yes.
So, closure of neighboring residence permitted. Okay. At 33 South Crossroad, Statsburg, New York, identified as tax parcel number 1332006166010537000000 in the Greenbelt Zoning District. Whereas the site is depicted on a drawing prepared by Mr. Hillibrand and submitted on August 13th, 2025, on a map sheet showing measurements determined to be by using Dutchess County Parcel Access, and whereas the applicant seeks the first area variance from the zoning law 108-4.3B-5B to change the distance of the chicken pen to three residents from the maximum of two, five, I mean, minimum of 250, 250 feet without a rooster, to 93 feet from 31 South Crossroad, tax grid number 045709, 160 feet from 43 South Crossroad, tax grid number 072707, and 219 feet from 30 Tom's Way, grid number 123741, and whereas the applicant seeks a second area variance from the zoning law of 108-4.3B-5D to change the distance of enclosed manure or other odor or dust-producing substances to two residents and four wells from the -- do I have to cross out the wells here again? No.
Yeah, you've got it. Required minimum.
From the required minimum of 200 feet to 93 from the residence at 31 South Crossroad, tax grid number 045709, and 160 feet from residence at 43 South Crossroad, tax grid number 072707, and 50 feet from well at 33 South Crossroad, tax grid number 053700, and 52 feet from well at 41 South Crossroad, tax grid number 063700, 149 feet from well at 31 South Crossroad, tax grid number 045709, and 180 feet from the well at 43 South Crossroad, tax grid number 072707. And whereas pursuant with--
So, whereas.
Two, whereas pursuant to six, New York, CRR6175C17, the granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence is a Type II action under the State Environmental Review Act and not subject to review under the act.
Whereas, whereas. You're under the whereas.
She's not ready for us yet. Oh, whereas, whereas. Now there be a resolve that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267B of the Town Law and Hyde Park Zoning Law, Section 108-33.6B2 regarding requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties. The applicant applied for animal husbandry of five, we're going to say six. The chickens are out of sight and contained within a pen located in the rear of the property, behind the applicant's house, and the animals are relatively quiet. The noise generated by the chickens is further mitigated by forest cover and insulating topography. There are nearby properties which also have chickens. In addition, chickens eat bugs, ticks, and will benefit the neighborhood. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method, or method feasible by the applicant to pursue, other than these area variances. Usable area on this site is limited. The applicant has located the chicken pen in the most sensible location. The Hillibrand family sees benefit in teaching their children animal husbandry of chickens as part of the home environment and providing significant emotional relief to their special needs children. The Hillibrand family shares their eggs with adjoining neighbors. The Zoning Board of Appeals is required to grant the minimum variance necessary. The requested variances are numerically substantial but are reasonable, given the benefit obtained by the applicant. The requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions of the general neighborhood or district. The coop is cleaned weekly by the applicant, and manure is secured, securely contained. When the coop is cleaned, the manure is transported off property for disposal. As such, no adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district is anticipated. The difficulties are self-created. The applicant purchased the chickens and has participated in animal husbandry without securing the necessary approvals. The applicant sought these area variances after receiving a notice of violation from the Deputy Zoning Administrator. Be it therefore resolved.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variances, subject to the following conditions. I'm going to try and do this as clearly as possible, but pardon in advance. Number one, the granted variances are specific to the husbandry of chickens only. Any change or addition of animals will result in the revocation of the variances. Two, there shall be a limit of six chickens on the property at any given time. Number three, no roosters shall be permitted on the property at any time.
No, I'm sorry. Repeat, please.
Sure. Sure, no roosters on the property at any time. Number four, the chicken coop and run area shall be maintained in a manner that prevents the chickens from escaping or roaming freely on the property. And number five, in recognition of the applicant's expressed desire for these variances to be temporary in nature, they shall lapse upon the applicant's cessation of the care of the chickens, so if you voluntarily stop, the sale of the property, or the passage of six years from the date of this resolution, whichever occurs earlier. How's that?
A payment of fees.
And pay, and payment of all fees and escrow.
I just have one question about number four. Are you saying that they can't, like, if we're outside, can they roam freely while we're outside with them, or?
Supervis, supervised visits?
How about, how about roam freely without supervision? How about that? Roam freely on the property
They like to fly around sometimes.
Yeah, that's the fun of it.
Direct supervision, so no cameras. Okay, so that.
Yes, Mr. Perkins has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Ms. Daly?
Aye.
Well, yes. Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think it's been a very fruitful discussion with the community and with us, and I think you've come to a resolution, I think, that will serve all. There is a lot of responsibility falling on your shoulders now to, to maintain that, and we anticipate that you will.
And you know more about zoning than you'll ever want.
Thank you. Girls, good luck. Okay. We now have a, move to a new public hearing. Jassa one, one, two, three, four, Route nine G. We are looking for an area variance to increase the maximum permitted building scale from forty thousand square feet to sixty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine square feet for the construction of a warehouse and storage facilities on a seventeen-point-two acre parcel. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Biggipsy Journal on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good afternoon, evening. Would you state your name and?
Yes, I am Amy R. Gerakis. I'm with K A R C Planning Consultants, and we represent Jassa Properties LLC. Quick history on the project, this is one, two, three, four, Route nine G. This is an approved project for warehouse and self-storage. We, the pro, we got our negative declaration, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of history. The neg deck was back in January of twenty-two. We did get an original area variance for scale in February of twenty twenty-two. That was for sixty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-one square feet. Our original site plan approval was in March of twenty twenty-two. Since then, there was an amended site plan, additional extensions. We are now before the planning board next month for our amended site plan approval extension. We did go back for an area variance, I'm jumping back, in February of twenty-three, because they expire. We are now, again, we skipped twenty-four, so now we are back before you for this same variance, however, because of the amended site plan, the scale was reduced by about two thousand square feet. So now we are looking for sixty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine square feet.
Okay. Questions?
I could just tell you real quickly, there was no changes to the project, there's no new information, and it was a type-two action.
Last time, I think Kelly was here, and we talked about the fact that whenever there's a downpour right out in front of your exit, the water builds up on the road, both sides, all the way across.
Okay.
She said that there may be something that she could do to help reduce that, or work with the state to fix it.
Okay.
She told, she, we, nothing in writing, but she said that she was willing to try and get that done.
Okay, this is the entrance on, off of nine G into, into the parcel?
It would be like, uh, from here to, to the display, from where your garbage, the garbage cans sit there often.
Okay.
You know, there's a telephone pole, and the garbage cans are right there.
Okay.
So it's just, there, it, it slows cars down, it, I mean, not all the time, but whenever it's a torrential.
Sure, okay, sure, I will pass that on.
Okay. Other questions to the board? Okay, any public, other individuals from the public? Do we have, have we received any public comments?
No, we have not.
Okay. I would then move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe we have a resolution. April?
Yes, we do. So, we have a resolution to grant an area variance to Jassa LLC at one, two, three, four, Route nine G in Hyde Park, New York. The resolution reference number is twenty twenty-five dash sixteen Z, and of course, today's date is October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the applicant K A R C Planning Consultants Incorporated, on behalf of the owner, Jassa LLC, have submitted an application for an area variance to increase the maximum permissible building scale, square footage, to construct commercial buildings, also known as the project, at the property located at one, two, three, four, Route nine G, Hyde Park, New York, one, two, five, three, eight, identified as tax parcel number six one six five dash zero four dash five two four four eight one, in the East Park Business District, zoning district. Whereas the project is depicted on the plan entitled Site Plan Prepared by L R C Group, dated June first, twenty twenty-one, and revised August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas in twenty twenty-three, the applicant sought and obtained an area variance from zoning law section one oh eight dash five point one five to permit, to permit an increased building scale of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-one square feet, where forty thousand square feet is the maximum allowed for the construction of an office space, warehouse and storage units for a seventeen-point-two acre parcel. And whereas, the applicant now seeks an area variance from the zoning law section one oh eight dash five one five to permit an increased building scale of sixty-four thousand feet, eight hundred and forty-nine square feet, where forty thousand square feet is the maximum allowed. And whereas, in accordance with the town code and the State Environmental Quality Review Act, also known as SECRA, the planning board is required to, to determine the classification of the proposed, proposed project as lead agency. And whereas, the planning board classified the proposed project as an unlisted action under SECRA, and determined that the proposed project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and issued a negative declaration by resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty A on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, which was subsequently filed with the town clerk on June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas, the twenty twenty-two negative declaration remains in full force and effect. And whereas, pursuant to section two thirty-nine dash M of the general municipal law, the project was referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, which responded on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, that the project was a matter of local concern. And whereas, a duly noticed public hearing was held on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, today, at a duly noticed public media, at a duly noticed public meeting during which all those who wished to speak were heard. And whereas, the applicable standards for considering an area variance are set forth in town law, section two sixty-seven dash B, and Hyde Park zoning law, section one oh eight dash thirty-three point six B two, which required the board to take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the general neighborhood or community by such grant. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings accord, in accordance with section two sixty-seven dash B of the town law and the Hyde Park zoning law, section one oh eight dash three three point six B two regarding the requested variance. One, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties. The subject parcel covers seventeen-point-two acres, and the proposed development will be visually screened from both the roadway and adjacent properties by the extensive vegetation, including both evergreen and deciduous trees, thank you. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method foreseeable for the applicant to pursue, other than the requested area variance. The requested variance will allow the applicant to develop a significant portion of a, of the sizable partial while ensuring compliance with the remaining bulk requirements, and that the new construction will be outside of the wetland buffer. Potential alternatives would be financially infeasible for the applicant and environmentally detrimental, as it would likely increase the area of disturbance. Three, the requested variance is numerically substantial. The applicant seeks to increase the building scale by sixty-four thousand feet, eight hundred and forty-nine square feet, excuse me, where forty thousand square feet is the maximum permitted. If granted, this additional twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine square feet represents a sixty-two percent increase in footage, acreage, rather, oh, square footage, excuse me. That being said, this application is less substantial than the variance previously granted by this board in, in the year twenty twenty-two. The requested variance reflects a five percent decrease in the approved building scale for the project. Four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. While the project will result in significant ground disturbances for the development of several commercial structures, the proposed development will not negatively impact the East Park Business District. Other than improvement to the existing drive, the development will not impact the wetland buffer and extensive, and extensive existing vegetation will screen the site from a traveling pub, from the traveling public and the neighboring properties. Further, the planning board determined that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Five, the difficulties are self-created. The property was purchased subject to the current zoning code. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variances, subject to the following conditions. One, pursuant to section one oh eight dash thirty-three point five F one, the authorized activity must commence within one year of the date of the issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
Ms. Daly has moved the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. Good luck with your, your project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We move on to a new application now, Vintage Emporium. They're looking to allow a sign graphic that is fifty inches in width, where ten inches is the maximum permitted by the town code, and an increase to twenty-four inches in width has been granted by the Hyde Park Planning Board by resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-two, conditioned upon receiving an area variance from the remaining twenty-six inches of width for the sign graphic. The Sir, would you state your name and tell us what, tell us a little bit about what you're looking for?
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Veznaver, and I'm one of the co-owners of the Hyde Park Antique Center. We've taken ownership about two years ago, and we've been grateful to be part of the community here. And we're looking to change the name of our business to Hyde Park Vintage Emporium, upgrading the graphic on the sign. We're not changing the structure, placement, or size of the sign in any shape, way, shape, or form. We're simply just using, because of the oval nature shape of the sign, we're looking to create a graphic that fits with the oval shape of the sign itself, highlighting the historic nature of our building, because of the, the fact that our building is offset off the road, some people don't even notice our building driving down the, driving down Route nine, so that will help them kind of reference the building itself.
They should slow down.
They should, definitely.
So they slow down. Questions? No?
I was wondering why, was this, this was previously a variance, or it was?
No.
No?
So the, I can answer that.
Go ahead.
The planning board is empowered under the code to grant a certain waiver up to a point, and then they have, if they want to go beyond what the planning board's authorized to do, they have to come to the variance for the rest.
So, if we were to grant this variance, would it be in perpetuity, or would they have to renew it again if they, you know, updated the sign with the same parameters that are currently in place?
The sign, it would, it would be in perpetuity in terms of the size of the sign. Would they come back and change the writing in it? I don't know if that would
Right, if they want to replace the sign, they would likely have to come back and apply again for the dimensions of the new sign.
All right, thank you.
The condition totally ceases.
But I think the planning board has recognized the, the need to change the sign, and they've gone to the extent that they are allowed in their requirements, and thus you've come to us
Correct.
To expand it beyond that. It's not unlike what we looked at, I don't know if you remember Duncan signage? You weren't, okay.
I'm not sure if I was.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay, anyway, we have, we have, we have addressed this on a, on a number of occasions. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Then I would, I would move to set a public hearing for November twentieth, which is the next hearing of the, of this floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then I also have a motion to refer this project to the county for review, per municipal law, two three nine dash M. Are you familiar with that? Do we know? Tad, can you explain that?
No. I can. So when a, when a commercial property seeks a, an area variance along, within five hundred feet of a certain areas, so for instance, a county or state road
That's a state, that's a state road.
Then by state law, it needs to be referred to the local county planning office for their comment.
Okay.
Typically, for something like this, you would see the county come back saying that it's a matter of local concern, and that they're not too worried about it.
I, I don't remember one where they had a concern.
No.
Can you, can you remember one?
I do. The flag over at the Saki
Okay.
Brewery, they
Oh, yeah.
Gave us the U.S. code that said that it can't be higher or even with the American flag.
Okay, so, we will see you next month.
Excellent.
And I think you can proceed with looking
The motions?
Oh, you need a motion to refer?
Quick, quick question, though. The sign itself has not changed size, it's merely the letters on the sign.
Correct, it's just the
Oh, the image.
Just the graphic.
Oh, there's a graphic underneath.
Of the building itself.
That's this big?
Yeah.
So we have
I like it.
I have moved a motion to refer, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, we will see you next month.
Thank you very much, see you soon.
Will you have more graphics? I know we have the one picture, is there others? Thank you. All right. Now, we have, we have saved the best for last. N R I Hyde Park. Twenty twenty-five, if you are looking for several variances on the project at nineteen ninety-five two twenty-sixty-six Campus Road. Today, we would like to basically have you give us a rundown of where you are, and what are you changing, and why?
Okay. Give me two seconds, excuse me, to give a slide presentation to
Okay.
Go along with that.
Can you, can you open it?
Yeah, the mouse isn't working.
Is it turned on?
It is on.
Is it backwards? Like you, your back, your buttons backwards?
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute, let's see if we got
You got a tech
We may have a technical, we may have a technical issue here.
There's a little bit of a dim spot here.
There's a little bit of a dim spot here.
Work Monday.
Well, I can put my mouse here for you so you can talk.
Oh, there it goes.
Just having a dish.
Oh, he has to be...
Long.
Always using the...
At the same time?
There we go. Okay. So, it's good to be back. Michael Zarin, you may remember Lou Dorso, the manager from NRI for the project, and Chris Lapine from La Bella. So, hopefully we're here to make the project better. Better, it's already, I think, a good project. It's under construction, fully under construction. Maybe some of you have seen it. Lou will go through and give you a little background on what's going on in the site and the construction. Some of you might know some of this, and I apologize if I'm just being redundant, but we were approached by one of the world's premier hospitality entities after we received all our approvals called One and Only. They're, they're sort of, I hadn't known of them, but people who were in the hospitality worldwide know they have another project in Montana in the United States. They have other ones around the world. And they will be the operator of the brand, quote unquote, that's why you're seeing signs now called One and Only, or it will be One and Only. We continue to own it and develop it, and will continue to be the owners of it and run it, but they'll be the, what's known as the facilities manager and the brand, One and Only. But coming with that, they came in after, as I said, after we were fully approved, and wanted to make some minor changes. So, most of the changes you'll see, and Lou will take you through them real quick, as well as take you through the construction, most of the changes are just relocations, minor tweaking and relocation, except for the changing of the guard at the CIA and the addition of One and Only gave us an opportunity to redevelop the Cocos parcel. The long vacant and long sought-after development of Cocos. So, that...
That wasn't that, that's always been owned by CIA. Is that correct?
That parcel continues to be owned by the CIA. So, everything is still CIA. Everything will still be under our master ground lease with the CIA. There's no changes in that. There's no changes in the program. Still the exact same program, the resort, the private leasehold villas, the, all the amenities, all the spa, the Bent Barnes, that'll all be the same. As you probably know, we formally commenced our review of our amended site plan that we made to the, to the planning board to facilitate these modifications. You should have received your copy of that application as an involved agency in this. The planning board will continue its jurisdiction as the lead agency doing the coordinated review. And in your packet, we included, having gone through this now once before, an application for the variances as well. We require a small zoning amendment that I'll take you through real quick, and I'll take you a little bit through the secret process. But we're here today to bring you up to speed on what has transpired on the site, what's going on, and to talk a little bit about the variances. Now, my understanding is, or had an understanding that was reaffirmed today, that maybe Tad has already mentioned to you. We have been meeting with the different staff and various of the agencies and had a pretty good idea of what the variances were. That's what we included in the application. But we have not yet received our formal letter that Tad has, you know, provides. She's completing that, so we, of course, will have less variances. No.
We may.
We may, I heard. We may have less variances than we've already indicated, and maybe one or two different ones. So...
Rest assured, clarity will come.
Clarity. Thank you. You just, you just cut to the chase. So, with that, let me turn it over to Lou to go through with you the construction and the, you know, changes that are occurring on the, under the site plan. And then I'll take you through a little bit of the secret and the studies we've done, and a little bit of the zoning, and then Chris will, has that map that we prepared, that figure, will walk you through that on the variances. Okay?
Turn it over to Lou.
All right.
Can I ask, before you get going? Yes. At the construction of, at the four corners where you're constructing now, what's the big pile of dirt for?
That is actually topsoil. That's been scraped off the roadway that goes all the way back. And what you guys don't see is how much work is happening down by the river right now.
Okay.
There is an incredible amount of work that has been going on, all the way down towards what we call the hearth building. We've actually started excavating the basement for that building as we speak.
So, that's the road that we see on the, you scraped it off for that road?
Yep.
Topsoil?
Yeah. Actually, it's scraped off both the emergency access road and the main road that goes all the way back. That's all the topsoil that's been pulled out.
What are you going to do with all that topsoil?
Well, I hope to reuse it and plant all our landscaping with that.
Okay, okay.
All our natural indigenous species as we get rid of all the invasives.
Very good.
Right?
Which is an amazing task.
Yes.
Because we're amazing.
All right.
Amazingly, let's proceed.
So, we've been working now for, I want to say about seven months, I want to say we've been under construction. We started with the entryway. Per the orders of conditions, our requirement was that we construct or reconstruct the St. Andrews entrance with new turn lanes and new lighting, new traffic stoplights. So, we're under construction with that right now. It's taken us a little while as some of the equipment we needed, new poles and lights, have taken some time on order.
Poles are going in now?
Yes, correct. Today, they were actually out there stringing lights. It should be done within about a month. That whole intersection should be complete and buttoned up. Behind that intersection, what you don't see is all the work that we've done on the main road that goes in. So, we cut a road from that intersection all the way back to our main building of the project, which is where our, you know, our check-in will be, where the concierge will be, our all-day restaurant. So, it's called, we call it the hearth building. And we've cut a road all the way back there, and then we've started excavating the basement, and we're reusing that rock onsite and crushing it to build the road base that we have in there. So, all that, you don't get to see all that work, but it's happening within the site, the crushing, all the equipment that's back in there, building this road as you see right now. We've also constructed the emergency access entrance for the fire trucks, which will be...
Is that the one, is that one a little down, further down the road, down the hill?
Correct. Down by the kill.
And you've just got paving in there now?
Correct.
Blacktop in there. Okay.
Correct. That'll be the emergency. And what we've done there is we have brought in our water line, our main water line, and that goes all the way to the center of site per our agreement with the fire department, that we would have a hydrant at the middle of site, the site, before we started construction. So, before we start vertical construction.
Where are you, where's the water coming from?
It's coming from Route Nine. Right along, there's a main on the, right along the side of the road on...
Okay. So, city road, city water?
Yes, correct.
Okay. From the river.
So, we've, we've actually built two of the main roads going in. What we haven't done is the loop roads that kind of create the residential or the leasehold area in the back. All of this is in anticipation of us going vertical right after this spring, when summer breaks. We're going to continue excavating throughout the winter to get the basements kind of ready to go and continue building the roads. So, that's kind of a snapshot of where we are right now as far as getting the site prepped for construction. Why don't I talk to you guys about the, I want to say, the slight changes that were made for One and Only? So, I'm going to first talk to you about, they came in, and one of the first things they wanted from us is they wanted the barn building and what we call the spa building swapped. Originally, we had our barn building, which is where our event center was, overlooking the river. They felt that it would be better if it was more in the woods and that the spa overlooked the river. So, we swapped the spa building, which is where the swimming pool is and stuff, which now overlooks the river, and moved the barn building to more of the woodsy, overlooking FDR.
Now, you have, I'm looking at this one where they have, the buildings are colored. You have a green and a gray and a dark blue. Are you familiar with?
Construction proximity diagram. A, zero dot, zero seven A.
I'm going to see if he can find it.
We don't have that picture.
Yeah. Actually, you should have that one, too. Somewhere deep in there. There should be a bunch of, it's a pretty thick packet.
Okay. All right. So, the spa...
Okay. He's pointing out where the spa is now. And then, Chris, will you move it over to where the spa was? Okay. So, that was where the spa was. So, they just flipped locations.
So, you moved the spa overlooking the river?
Correct.
Okay. So, that on our one map is green. That's the new spa. And you've moved what was in the spa, that location, well...
Yeah. So, what we did is we took the spa and swapped it with the barn.
Okay. So, the barn now is blue, I think.
These two got swapped.
These two. These two. Could you point those out slowly?
Sure.
This is where the spa was formerly located.
Right.
This is where the barn was formerly located.
And you swapped the two.
These two were just switched.
And the barn is for...
The barn is for catering events?
Hoedowns.
I'm sorry?
Hoedowns.
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 Hyde Park hoedowns. Is the square footage of both buildings the same?
Approximately, yes.
Pretty much.
Okay.
You'll see, in our application, we did comparisons, exact square footage.
Okay. I didn't get that deep.
With that swap, is there a variance required?
No.
None?
Okay. There's variances that, let us take this in order, because we try to work out, and we have a figure that just deals with variances that superimpose.
You're going to use the microphone?
Oh. I'm sorry.
You each have, you each have one.
Right. Let us, let us go through it, because after we're done, we'll answer a lot of your questions. But we also have a figure that we provided you that shows the variances superimposed onto that with colors and the whole thing.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No worries. So, basically, the resort itself also has the same program that we had before. It's just we moved a couple buildings around, and it's basically the same program, same uses that we used it before. The good part, the part that we're excited about, is the addition of Cocos. Cocos was never part of the original plan. We never had access to that. With the changing of the guard at this, the CIA, we've been granted the ability to redevelop that area, which is a bonus for our site. With that, we have been able to eliminate some pieces of the project which we weren't very happy about. Namely, we had a parking area and a back-of-house area that was right off, right where Chris is kind of circling right now, kind of off the emergency access.
Yeah. It was right by the emergency access.
Yeah.
We had, we granted you a variance for that.
Exactly. We had stacker cars there, and we had a back-of-house area there. Now, we can relocate that to the area behind Cocos, which is a much better area. It's much easier access. It's going to be less traffic. It's just a better area for our project in general.
Yeah.
But we're also taking advantage of the remodel or the redo of Cocos in the fact that we're adding retail along Route Nine, about thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand square foot, right on Route Nine. And we will be following the code that says that, you know, we're allowed minimal setbacks. So, that will actually be pushed closer to the road than Coco sits right now.
So, are you moving Coco?
Well, we'll be demoing Cocos, but the existing building sits back. If there's parking right now in front of Coco, there will no longer be parking in front of Coco. Parking will be behind the building now. It'll actually be street frontage, right?
Will the, will the building stand?
We have, we have a photo of the...
No. Coco is itself will be torn out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there'll be sidewalk also along in front of Coco's.
Okay.
So, then Coco's will be about twelve to thirteen thousand square feet in front of, in front of our back-of-house area, which is where Chris is pointing right now. And that's where we moved all our facilities for loading, unloading vehicles, trucks, all our linens and garbage, all our stuff that supports the hotel is going to be based out of that back-of-house area, so that it doesn't go into the site and stays closer to Route Nine. We also placed our parking behind there for all our valet parking. And then we also have a teaching kitchen and vertical farm. The vertical farm used to be part of our barn building, but now we've moved it out to be adjacent to our teaching kitchens. And by being there, it's more adjacent to where the cooks are going to be using it, and it's a much better use for that.
What are they going to raise, what are they going to raise in the vertical farm?
Cilantro, basil, I don't know, vegetables.
Okay. All herbs and vegetables. Okay.
Not of garlic.
Because there is a vertical, there is a vertical farm in Kipsey now that has been commercial, one that's been in existence for some time. I'm just curious as to that.
The plan is to use the produce or what's grown in there as the fresh ingredients at the different restaurants within the site.
It's approximately a thousand square feet for the footprint of it.
I'm sorry?
It's approximately a thousand square feet, the footprint.
Okay. No blueberries, though. I'm waiting for the vertical blueberry farms up here. Okay. Sorry.
The other change is we moved the pickleball and padel courts from within the residential area to closer to Route Nine, which are, be adjacent to the Coco's building.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, I got it. Okay. Why, why that move?
Well, unfortunately, pickleball and padel are louder than people think they are, and having them in a residential neighborhood probably wasn't the best spot for us. This gave us the opportunity to get them out and away from the residences.
Bing, 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 bing.
Now, let me ask, because you're parking cars up here near Coco. If I come in, do I have to park there and then I am...
All vehicles will be valeted.
So, even if I am renting...
Okay. Let me correct myself. All villa residents will have parking within their villas. So, all the villas, the leasehold villas, all have parking provided at the leasehold villas.
Okay.
The resident or guests at the hotel will all be valeted.
Right. Okay.
We don't want any cars down in what we call our hotel loop. Chris, if you go plan north, yeah, plan north. So, we have a loop that kind of circles our hotel villas right there. And we're not going to allow any private vehicles there.
Makes sense. Okay.
Unless you own a villa.
Obviously, we do have parking for the retail facility right here behind it.
So, the retail is brand new?
Correct.
And you're putting it in up close to Route Nine?
Correct.
Closer than any building from, than any building in...
It's approximately the same distance as Ready Coffee.
What do you see, what type of retail do you see in there?
We see like a taste of New York and a, probably a bakery, maybe, selling goods that will be... We see like a taste of New York and a probably a bakery maybe, um, selling goods that will be baked on campus or within our resort. Um, I do have some pictures. Um, Chris, could you bring up those elevation of Coco's?
Let me scroll down here. So the, this is all, this is all what you've seen that's in your packet you saw last time. This is the approved project, just to give you another sense.
Architecture, the architecture and feel of the project stays the same. We didn't change the, the materiality of the project at all. We, we kept all the same woods and stone um that we had before and showed you. There it is.
There's Coco.
Have you changed the price of the villas?
Unfortunately, yes.
Wrong direction. Or depending what your perspective is.
They've more than doubled, haven't they?
I, you know, I'm not privy to all that information. I do know that the price has definitely gone up.
Okay.
So this is the uh frontage along Route nine. Um, this is the back of house building.
And the scale is a little off on that back of house building. It's actually shorter than that. If, in elevation, you'll see that it's a, it's a little bit shorter building.
And here's the uh rear parking.
So we're trying to keep in, in theme with the town's requirements of moving the building forward, having a walkway. We envision a small wall, um, like a stacked stone wall in front of it, um, much like mirroring across the street at the Saki Brewery, uh, with a windy sidewalk.
Remember, this is, on, this part of the property is, is CB district. So it's no, no setback. They want, they want the retail up close to the road. They don't want parking in the front. So that conforms with all the zoning.
But not with the town.
Excuse me?
It may conform with, with what the zoning says, but not with the town, because there used to be a hundred foot setback all along Route nine.
That's was the pass, right. Then they changed it. I guess that was, the town intent was to change it.
You know when that happened?
Now, I don't, you're.
Cause I, I remember.
Todd would be the best person.
We had to give uh the culinary an exception for that building that they built. Who built it for them? General Mills? I don't know, somebody.
Are you talking about that? Culinary, culinary may have been in, on the sad district.
That might be a separate.
They're one hundred and fifty foot setback.
They're in the.
They're in this, they're in the SAD. This happens to be the, and I'm going to go through the zoning a little bit with you. This, this was the. CB. Only area on the site that CB corridor business.
I think it'll stand out. I think it'll be odd.
Yeah.
So the, so the retail, as you, as you enter off of nine, the retail is to the right. Is that correct? It's connected, it's the, your green building there, it's the front of that, that's the retail.
That's the retail portion we hear.
Okay, okay. And the back is your uh service.
Back of house, correct.
Okay, okay.
I, I have not seen the map, but I believe you're referring to the Roosevelt setback uh that was a hun, I think it was a hundred feet. I think it was on both sides of the road.
Yes.
I have not seen a map as to where those parcels are, are, or how they're impacted, or if that easement is still in place.
Is this on the Roosevelt property that's contiguous to this?
It was all the way down. It was the same, about the same timeframe when they decided they didn't want to put the bridge across there.
Yeah, we didn't have to do the setback for um Dunkin' Donuts, and I think that's in the hundred feet.
Okay.
But it was existing, right?
There was an existing building there.
It was a Brenner's.
Yes.
Brenner's.
Brenner's, ice cream.
Oh.
That's going.
I don't know.
He's an old time.
Yeah, I was going to say it's going.
The town generally doesn't enforce these restrictions.
They and the beer and discount and.
Right.
Okay.
So, talk a little bit about SEACR for a second, the impacts of, of these changes. Um, that's pretty much the, the changes to the site, or do you want to?
Okay, in, in all of this, then the, the type of variances.
And then I'll get to the types of variances, okay? Yeah. So, um, having gone through this process for two years with the planning board, with yourselves and others, we sort of had an idea about what we needed to study and what the impacts were and what the sensitive areas were. So we prepared, as you saw, a whole, all multitude of studies, looking at all the impact areas and um so did a supplementary to, to demonstrate uh that none of those impacts would create any new significant adverse impacts requiring any type of modification. Um, we also, what we did is we met with the DC, we met with the DOT, the people DOT, we met with people at SHIPO, we met with um Army Corps of Engineers, we met with the fire districts, both fire districts, because now we're under two fire districts. Um, uh, we did, you know, again, having gone through the process, we knew ahead of time, we met with the Winnekee, you know, the Winnekeys. We met with the senior Hudson again. We met with the FDR, you know, part, the park, national parks, in advance of putting that application together. So, um, there's uh both the FDR in your packet, you'll see it, uh, and Winnekee have supported the project and have no, no objections. Um, there's a, um, the DC said that will be grandfathered pursuant to the new regulations, because this is an existing project. Uh, we have no new wetland encroachments. We have no new archaeological or star, historic sites that are going to be impacted. No new endangered species issues. We did, we did a whole new lighting plan to show that there'll be no new lighting impacts. There's going to be a small increase in sewage, which will be continued to be handled by the existing system and capacity.
Your sewage is onsite.
Onsite, same, same CIA, same one we were using for the approved project. Um, using the same excess um capacity that the CIA had, that we got before, and we purchased originally from the, um, from the sewer plant.
Well, okay, let me go back to that. That sewer plant is on your property, is that?
No, 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 that's the, that's the town.
That's the joint city.
Poughkeepsie, um, Poughkeepsie.
Oh.
Town of Poughkeepsie and city sewer plant. There you go.
There was some issues you had to clear.
There's a lot of issues. But the fourth ward, the town of Poughkeepsie, which we are part of, had a lot, allocation, significant allocation, significant capacity that the CIA had. They had a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The town of Poughkeepsie gave us initially, under the approved project, twenty thousand more gallons per day out of their capacity, and the CIA gave us another increase of six thousand, approximately that this would increase.
What are you anticipating the total capacity needed?
Is forty-six now, thousand. We were, we got approval for forty under the approved project, thirty-nine, forty. Now we need forty-six. Um, the, um, we did new traffic counts and the DOT approved those traffic counts and said no new traffic require, um, improvements were required. So we went through that. We worked with the fire districts and all the access and they have no objections at this point. So, um, there's approximately, there's a increase of disturbance of about four point seven acres, primarily the Coco development mostly. One acre of that was already, as you know, disturbed, and there's approximately four acres of new impervious surface net for the project. And as I told you before, most of the um architecture was, um, you know, preserved, almost all was preserved as well as we've met with the various staff and worked with some of the people on the planning board on the architectural, the, for the Coco's on that, and tried to do something that they like. We hope we met their standards. So, so that, I think we've demonstrated in the studies that there are no new significant adverse impacts and hope that the planning board will either, uh, what they call affirm or modify the neck deck that was already issued for the project. And that's typical procedures. Um, as you know, um, we're here before you pretty much to just introduce the changes, that you can't take any actions until the planning board completes the SEACR. And hopefully that will be sooner rather than later. Now, this map, and again, not in your jurisdiction, but obviously we wanted to just give you a full, a full synopsis of what's happening. Um, we worked with staff at, at the planning board in the town to look at, trying to align the zoning uh with the uses that are at the site. So the dark blue was always sad. That's the St. Andrews district, zoning district, that was developed specifically for the CIA. And the light blue and gray was commercial CB, commercial, uh, commercial business. Um, oh, I'm sorry, corridor business. Um, so working for, for a number of reasons, we're, before the town board, we filed the petition that you should see in your packet. That, that petition was included as part of the application, just like the variance application, to rezone the area that's light blue to um SAD. And that, that permits us to, you know, you see there's a couple of villas and that, that air, that parcel, just so you know, is already merged with the dark blue. That was, that was achieved by subdivision approval during the approved project. So it's already one parcel, the light blue and the dark blue is a, is one development parcel. Now we're aligning those two parcels and making them both sad. And, you know, it's because also, you know, we have a number of um resort related uses on that that we thought should come under the sad district and alike. We also wanted to avoid, if that was a CB, we would have significantly exceeded the CB sixty-five thousand gross square footage scale, and we wanted to avoid that. We also have a couple of new units on that area, new villas that already are, have a specific definition that we wanted to, that are permitted in the sad and we, that was done for the approved project by the town board. So, so that's the zoning amendment that is before the, um, before the um town board. Now, the gray area is made up of two CB and we preserve that. One, because one of them is the separate, um, already Coco's parcel is already a, you know, a separate parcel and that will have the, if, if you had, if that was sad, you'd have a hundred and fifty foot setback. That would make that impossible um to, to develop. It's already been developed and disturbed. Uh, you'd also have setback requirements um on, on the northern parcel.
But doesn't make it impossible.
It'd make it impossible.
No.
And you, and you have retail.
Well, you'd have existing.
That's not permitted in the sad.
Yeah.
So, so we kept it there. Pickleball, we also left in that also, uh, for, again, reasons of scale and others. So, um, that's, that's the history of the zoning, um, and.
Are the villas in there, those are just on the road, those are new additions?
Those are, those are new.
A couple of those are new. A couple of those were existing and always kind of crossed the line and were in a gray area that needed to be defined.
Okay.
So, um, with that said, um, turn it over to Chris and as I said before, we don't have a, yet a final letter on the variances. We think we've got most of them uh before you. You also saw in our cover letter, we tried, and the application, we tried to cover the five factors. Think, I think, you know, respectfully, I think we meet them. Uh, they're really not that different. You'll see that the variance except for one or two, um, are modifications of the existing and some of them have been removed that Chris will explain. Um, we hope, you know, we'll have sooner rather than later a letter of support from the planning board for the, um, for the variances. Um, so let me turn it over to Chris and uh he'll take you, you should, you have that figure in your packet, which is really self-explanatory. It's a good figure.
Yeah, I, I think I'm gonna.
Try to make it easy for you.
Yeah, I, I think the way in which I'm going to go about presenting this is I'm going to give you an overview of the previous variances that you granted in February of twenty twenty-four. Then I'll review some of those variances that were currently, are still going to be in effect, and then review the new variances as well. So what I brought with me this evening to try to make it a little easier for you as well is just a little recollection from the past. Here is the plan that you saw last time when we submitted our variance application in February of twenty twenty-four. And uh this particular plan here that I'm showing you is the two variances associated with the uh setback for the pool that was within the one hundred foot setback from the property line from the FDR property.
Right.
And the encroachment we had for the grading and the retaining wall, which was within the stream corridor setback. Those were two of the five uh variances. For the emergency access road, uh, we had once again another setback associated with the stream corridor. Uh, and that was to allow us to do the necessary grading to create that access drive. We also had, within the one hundred and fifty foot setback adjacent to Route nine, is we had some of this parking, which was on the other side of the ridge line, uh, which you granted, and then.
And that, that, that's, that's been moved then since, correct?
No, the parking that's moved is actually further, further south.
Okay.
We'll go through that and then uh you granted uh variances at this location for the encroachment within the uh one hundred foot setback to allow the uh cart drive.
Right.
As well as for the construction of the pedestrian bridge. So those were the previous uh variances you had granted to us. So now I'll go to this color-coded plan that we, which we provided you. And let me just make this a little smaller. So what we've shown in this plan is the orange are the variances which you previously granted. Obviously, here is for the pedestrian bridge and the grading within the buffer.
Right.
This is the buffer grading that we talked about before. This is where the pool was before in this particular area. And here is the grading associated with the emergency access drive.
Right.
Um, we're here before you to reconfirm that we still need these variances in this particular location here for the pedestrian bridge and the access uh drive that gets down there.
Wasn't, wasn't that particular variance a time?
That was for the sales trailer.
Six months?
That, that was the sales trailer.
The sales trailer.
Okay, okay.
So there.
Actually crossed the bridge, right?
Right, okay.
Right, they need to grade to.
Got you. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, these are two of the previously granted uh variances that are going to remain unchanged. There's no change to the grading. There's no change to the disturbance within those areas. Here is, similarly speaking, with the emergency access drive, we have the same amount of grading within the one hundred foot setback area of the stream corridor. And, and honestly, this work has been completed.
Right.
As part of the installation of emergency access drive and the installation of the drainage pipe beneath it. So as we come over here, we are into, back into where the pool area was previously. So as we come over here, we are into, back into where the pool area was previously. Now, we had a setback of 36 feet for the deck associated with the pool area. And then we had an encroachment, I believe it was, uh, 25 feet into the stream corridor area for the grading that was associated with the pool and the retaining wall that we had placed in there previously. With the relocation of the pool and the barn, we now have a setback for the actual structure itself, the deck on the barn.
Of the new barn?
Of the new barn will be 85 feet, which obviously brings the net setback further. We have a retaining wall here on this outskirts of this green area. This is the kind of the event lawn area.
Yeah.
Where they have some gatherings outside. We've put a retaining wall in there because there's a 10 foot change in grade and we're being conservative right now with the variance that we're asking. Uh, and, and we're being conservative in the fact that we don't know if we're going to step this wall and it'll be maybe two six foot high walls, or we may come back, it may end up being three, three and a half foot high walls and a wall of only three and a half feet doesn't require a variance because it's less than five feet. But we're taking a conservative approach for this and we're asking for the variance. And it, it really works out well because we were, we're thinking also about the trails that we're designing now at this stage. Before we weren't as, uh, the trails have now caught up to us in terms of the design. So now in terms of the grading, this will allow us to actually grade in where trail's going to go adjacent to the event barn. So that's part of the reason why we're being conservative in terms of how we're asking for this 12 foot, uh, setback in this particular area.
And that retaining wall is almost next to the barn, the new barn?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be slightly to the northwest of it. This variance here for the parking, which you brought up before, uh, we have not increased the disturbance. This is going to be the same requested variance in terms of the setback and the encroachment from what you previously granted. Now, as we work our way over here, we have now with the new operator, uh, part of their program criteria is to have a security fence along the borders of their property that are exposed to potential pedestrian traffic. That fence area will extend to, along the emergency access drive, connect to the emergency fire gates and then run along the ridge line as it traverses along Route 9. And then we can't continue through the ridge line here because we have an archeologically sensitive area. So we're running that all around the perimeter of that and tying into the padel and pickleball courts. From there, that fence will then continue across the drive. There'll be, uh, it'll become more decorative in nature as it crosses the drive and then surround the back of the, create a barrier between the valet parking and the back of house. The placement of this, in this particular area, we are 10 feet at the most, uh, closest point from the 150 foot setback. Couple of particular reasons, obviously, as we selected this area. One, it's along the ridge line in terms of ease of installation as opposed to installing it on some of the slopes there that are about two on one slopes. Also, and I don't know if you've driven past this site in the last week or so, but if you have, how many of, raise your hands, have seen the posts?
Oh, yeah.
That we've placed up there. We've placed three posts in this area for the last week, week, and it has a pink ribbon at the bottom of it. So because of the elevated height, the driver's not seeing this as they're driving because it's so high up. And the reality is that although it may be 10 feet off of the established right of way, if you look at how the right of way meanders, it comes west into the site, there's over 70, 70 to 75 feet between this point and the actual edge of pavement, not the actual white line, but the edge of pavement. So it's further setback than you actually envisioned and it's screened by, uh, the trees that are currently there. So for those of you who haven't seen the posts that we've set up, we've set up six foot high posts painted in black, which would mimic the posts that are being proposed for this project. If you haven't seen it, it kind of shows that it's going to be obscured by the existing vegetation.
How high is this retainer fence?
The fence is a six foot high fence.
Okay.
And it's, it's going to be a black post and a black chain link. And as it meanders and works its way out to where it's open, it's going to, uh, become a decorative fence as opposed to a chain link. The other variance that we're, uh, seeking, so I, I've spoken to...
Chris, can I just interject one sec, please? Really the only area that we thought, and going through it with the planning board, that you could see it some, somewhat, is right in that area. And the planning board asked us in fact that could we, could we make it a little more decorative, the fence in that one area? So that's what we're doing.
So the other two variances that were, uh, here before you for is the, in the CB district, there is a maximum, uh, square footage of 6,500, uh, 65,000 gross square feet of impervious area associated with your buildings and your parking or any structures. Within our CB district that we have, uh, established, which includes the pickle and padel courts, uh, we're currently at a square footage of 66,391. As Michael alluded to earlier, there is some discussions taking place as to whether or not the padel and pickleball courts would be considered structures. But in the event that they're not considered structures, that would eliminate over 10,000 square feet and we would fall within the criteria of the 65,000 square feet.
And the variance would not be necessary. Otherwise it'll be a, a variance of about 1,300 feet. Will be over that 65,000.
So, uh, also, um, as you're all aware with the, bless you, within your parking lot areas, the town code requires that you have a minimum of 15% landscape internally within the... Our plan right now is proposing 0%. And, and, and it was, the reason why we're proposing 0% is, um, we looked at how we had to reallocate the stack parking over here. We've double stacked, in some cases triple stacked the parking, but we're fully screened on the western side of this valet parking. And we felt preserving as much green space to the east and northern side of this would provide us more ample opportunity to provide a heavier depth of screening for cars as they're coming into the site, but also cars driving along Route 9. Uh, so henceforth, we're asking for a variance for the internal landscaping, knowing that we're taking that internal landscaping and combining it with what we're hoping to put on the buffer and increasing that depth of buffer so that we could further screen any of the cars that may be parked here.
Yeah, also, it just, I think it's worth noting and probably the obvious, this is not ever going to be used as a public parking. This will be valet parking. The only people who use it is, are the valet. And we also, we are constrained somewhat in that area to the wetland buffer area. And we wanted to stay out of that if we could, even though, even though DC has grandfathered us and we have a net decrease in encroachment into the buffer area, we thought that it would be, it would be good for us to, if we can, stay out of it. So that's another reason why it's, we're a little constrained in that area.
The, the, uh, there's a building just to the south and west of the parking. Is that a new building?
This is the teaching kitchens, uh, that we were talking about earlier with the, that would have the, a house, the vertical garden.
Okay, oh, okay. That's where the blueberries are grown.
They are now.
That was this building that we had, uh, shown before. At this location.
Yeah, that's a nice...
It's looking very Jurassic Park to me.
Jurassic Park. Yes, and we have, that's where we keep the DNA.
There were dinosaurs there.
I'm sure.
No, no, I mean...
You mean they found the actual bones there?
Paper mache dinosaurs. It was a tourist spot.
Oh, is that right? Really?
Right where, uh, cocos was.
Really?
It was a fence up, looked like Fort Apache, and behind it was dinosaurs.
Okay, all right.
When I was a kid.
You, you just gave me something to sell this, what I do for, uh, work to my grandson.
When I, when I came down St. Andrews and I saw the machines there, I had this flashback. All the backhoes and stuff.
Wow. Wow. Tyrannosaurus Rex or Brontosaurus, which did you get a...
I think one of each.
One of each?
I was young.
So that's an overview of the variances that are before you. Uh, the previous ones, we're looking to re, reaffirm and the new ones. And, uh, Michael, if you want to conclude it and then we can open it up to any questions.
Yeah, we, and you saw in our application, we really tried to go through each one like we did last time, the same, you know, the five factors and the like. So, um, I would have, I would have asked if we could schedule the public hearing, but I think until we get Tad's final letter and understand exactly what we're going for, it would be premature. So, um, further questions or comments or thoughts? Appreciate you giving us the time.
Well, so the, I think the detriment to setting a public hearing tonight is that the advocate would have to notice the public, um, with regard to what variances are being sought.
Your preference is not to set a public hearing.
Not, not to. We, we, until we, until we come up with the final with, with Tad and all, and, um, I'm hoping it's very similar, if not the same, but...
Okay.
So just, just so you are aware, Mike, there is a requirement under the code, uh, that the planning board must set a public hearing within 62 days, right, of the application?
Of a complete application, but if the variance is...
So we'll just, we'll just deem this incomplete.
And we will waive any provision to that extent. That's...
Okay.
I'm used to waiving that.
All right.
What, can we do the 239M referral though?
Um, well, I, I mean, if, if things are going to...
Oh, that's right.
...work with the application, we should wait till...
I, I think that, I think the 239 went out.
No, you're right. I need final variances for that too, that's correct.
Planning board sent it out also with the variance application and the, but, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we're thorough.
Then we will, we will wait for your return.
Okay, all right.
And we appreciate the, this, uh, this explanation and, uh...
Great, well.
It's exciting.
It's like a nice improvement, actually.
Thank you, thank you. It's like, like Lucy said, we, we have about seven months of work in this.
Existing and the new was, was very helpful.
Good, good. Well, thank you for your time and, um...
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck with the planning work.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, we have one other piece of business. We have a, a resolution, um, for the, this would be a resolution designating a vice chair for November and December. With, with my departing, there will be some changes here and we would like to have a vice chair, um, set up. Therefore I would, I would move a resolution designating zoning board of appeals, vice chair for November and December of 2025, resolution 2025-VC. Whereas the current vice chair of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals, Jared Bowman, has submitted his resignation as vice chair effective October 31st to serve as chair of the board. And whereas the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals member, Richard Perkins has agreed to step into the role of vice chair of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals for the remainder of 2025, beginning November 1st, 2025. Now be it resolved that Richard Perkins be designated the vice president of the zoning board of appeals for the entirety of November and December, authorized to conduct meetings of the zoning board of appeals and to sign resolutions and related documents, including invoices, correspondence on behalf of the zoning board of appeals in the absence of the chairman. I move, is there a second?
Seconds.
Um, Madam Chairman, I think we need to have your...
Sure, Ms. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Do I abstain or?
You can put it on your own, of course.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
I agree.
Chairman McNary.
Yes, yes. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I now have a motion for adjournment.
No, no, we have, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have a special message before adjournment.
You have a what special?
Paul, Paul Donley is going to read a message.
I just want to say a couple of things. If you don't mind, if you don't mind.
This is for the record?
Yes, for the record, yeah.
Where is, where is, where is, where is?
Yeah, okay, yeah, where is? So I've known you, um, for many years and many years before you joined the zoning board. And I had always admired your commitment to the community, going back from the forums that you gave. And it is wrote something that I want to say to you in front of everybody. So I want to take a moment to thank you for your dedicated service on the zoning board. You've always led with fairness and integrity and your commitment to the community has truly made a difference. Having known you for several years, even before your time on the board, I've always admired your thoughtful leadership and genuine care for Hyde Park, wishing you the best in whatever comes next. And last, uh, from one Irishman to another, I want to send you off an Irish blessing. May the saddest day of your future be no worse than the happiest day of your past.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Being, being a writer of fiction, I appreciate your remarks there. Thank you very much. It's been an honor and a, and a pleasure and I know that, uh, the board now is in good hands with the, especially with the new vice chair coming in and the, and the, and the chair coming in. And certainly we could not have done this work without, uh, all of you, our delighted secretary and our administrator and of course our counsel, um, really make this thing run smoothly.
And Tony.
We're here to entertain and here we are.
The pyramid of our success.
But I think the purpose, as I, as I mentioned at the beginning, we really are helping choose the fork in the road for the community and for the, or the, for the, for the individual citizens. And I think you guys have carried that and I hope that, I know you'll continue to carry that. Thank you very much. And to close out, we have bread to, this was baked with delicate hands, uh, and we would like to share that with everybody, right? Would everybody get a bite? Oh, before that, have we adjourned?
No.
No, we haven't adjourned.
Now you can adjourn.
I would move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, let's eat. Ah, wonderful.